Calling the meeting of the Noblesville Common Council for Tuesday, July 14th to order. Mr. Boyce, can you please lead us in a pleasurable lead?
My pledge to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. For attendance, roll call vote, Ms. Lees.
President.
President.
Mr. Davis.
President.
Mr. O'Connor.
President.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
President.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Ms. Wiles.
Present.
Mr. Hampton.
Here.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Lees. Next on the agenda is the approval of the executive session memorandum from June 23rd, 2020.
President, I would move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And we have approval of the minutes for June 23rd, 2020.
President, I would move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. This, too, is a hand vote. All those in favor, right hand, please. Thank you. And approval of tonight's agenda.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to move miscellaneous one after approval of the claims.
And everything else?
And everything else stays the same.
Okay.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to amend the agenda to move item miscellaneous number one up above after claims. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. That two passes. Thank you.
President.
Ms. Wiles.
I would make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion and a second. This, too, is a hand vote. All those in favor. Thank you. The agenda is amended. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present. I have two, but I believe these may be for item from previous discussed ordinance, the Manning-Smith Group and Peter Massey. Am I correct in that you wanted wait? Okay. If anyone else has a notion, I guess, to speak tonight, just please fill out one of these forms. They're outside, just outside the door, and you can give it to the clerk. Council committee reports. I know there's a roads and potentially a parks and a finance. Is that right? Am I missing one? So we have three? No parks, okay. So we have a roads committee. Mr. Air.
I think you've all been emailed this, so I'm just going to highlight a few things unless Ms. Krupski'd rather do it for me. You say your head now, okay. Council met on the 10th of July and discussed lots of items. I'm going to highlight a few. Monument Street crosswalks, the RRFBs. Have I known what that means? Rectangular rapid flashing beacon being installed at the crosswalks. Overhead street lights are being scheduled with Duke Energy, with hopefully completion by August of 2020. Sidewalk construction has been complete. The street resurfacing and striping has been complete. Little Chicago Road and State Road 38 lighting. There has been a warrant that it is needed, but NDOT does control that roadway, and so the city is working with NDOT for that. Street rehabilitation contract 19 has been completed. That was the Meadows, Milgrove Subdivision, 141st Street and Cumberland Road. The 2020 contract has been awarded, and I believe it's been completed. And that was the CCMG money. And that was River Road, Logan Street, between 38 and River Road, and additional sidewalk work. There's also been a contract awarded, Midwest Paving, with completion of October 15th, for Country Lake Estates, North Harbor, South Harbor, Oak Bay, North 9th Street, Monument Street, and the Southwest Quad. A lot of this has already been completed, and I think the rest of it should be done by the end of the month. Alley work is scheduled to start yesterday, and it'll last for about a week. And all that's in Old Town here. Let's see. Harriman Boulevard, Phase Two, it should be complete as of yesterday. And the Corpus Campus infrastructure, which is a large project, Oleo Road, 141st to 146th. 146th from Bergen to Oleo, round about 146th and Oleo. It's a large project, and it needs to be done. They're going to let the bid some towards the end of July. There's a lot of infrastructure work that has to take place before paving, so they're looking at a 2021 date to start on the actual road portion. And that'll be a 90-day closure of Oleo Road with completion around the end, or around fall of '21, around Thanksgiving. Greenfield Avenue, Culvert over Lear Ditch, that's a fall of 2020 project, we're hoping, but it could run into spring of next year, and that's going to require a 21-day closure. Kerrigan Road Bridge, that's a county project. And that's to start the spring of next year, and it'll be 120 days worth of construction with a possible 90-day closure. All the rest of it, you can look over if anything interests you. Driving Committee has a proposal in front of us this evening, so you'll all see that. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Air. I think the only other one is finance. Mr. O'Connor.
Mr. President, thank you. The Finance Committee met July 9th. As Mr. Air just mentioned in his comments on the road committee, we had a fairly robust conversation about the funding tied to Oleo Road, which will come to us here in the not-too-distant future. It'll be a lease-rental bond structure utilizing the TIF in the area, the Bergen-Tegler TIF as part of the pledge. It'll end up being a general obligation bond. Typically, we do those in reverse order, but in this case, this is the best way to conduct the funding for the project. It's not without significant cost, but that area, from a long-term development perspective, has needed this improvement for some time now. This will help open up, I think, quite a bit of developable ground to the east, particularly along Oleo Road. If you've driven that stretch between 141st and 146th Street, you're well aware of the fact that it needs quite a bit of improvement. So this project is, wouldn't necessarily say long overdue, but it probably is overdue. So we're making a substantial investment here, but I think it will pay us dividends in the long run and short run, frankly. We had a very good conversation. Holly Ramone was at the meeting and went through some city health benefit comparisons, looking at Noblesville, Fishers, Westfield, Carmel, just giving us a sense of what our health benefit costs are like compared to our peers in the marketplace. Needless to say, I think our plans here for the employees are competitive. We do, and she does, a terrific job of looking at the market, doing the analysis, and trying to make sure that what we're offering is competitive and takes care of our employees. So that was very beneficial. I'll read you a couple of dates. Make sure that you've got these on your calendar. The budget timeline for presentations are scheduled for August 11th, 18th, and the 25th. And we anticipate introducing the budget on September 15th to the council. So you may want to mark those dates on your calendar. I think the 11th and the 25th are regular council meetings, so we'll be here. The 18th is the one-off. But we're going to do the presentations similarly to the way we've done them historically. Give the department heads the opportunity to tell us what their needs are. In our current financial environment, there's some discussion about looking at some different things that we may or may not do as a result of current funding. On a go-forward basis, we're still somewhat unsure as to what our lit revenue is going to look like in 2021 and '22. So there are and will be built into the budgets some contingencies so that we're in the position to react accordingly as we need to. The claims were reviewed and come to you with a favorable recommendation from the committee. And I think that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor.
Mr. President, I would move to approve the claims.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, right hand, please. And that moves forward. Thank you. After the amended agenda, we will hear miscellaneous number one next. Council to hear a semi-annual report from the Noblesville Main Street. Ms. Lorna Steele, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm just going to set up this PowerPoint really quick, and our ladies are going to pass out a packet for all of you.
Thank you.
We know will that presentation show up on these monitors. It should, right?
Should. Oh, thanks.
It should show up.
Can everyone hear me okay? Yeah. My name is Lorna O'Scui. I am the Executive Director of Noblesville Main Street. I'm at 839 Connor Street, and super excited to be here with you all today. I guess this is my first time in front of the new council, so hi, everyone I haven't seen before here. Yeah, we just want to really quick go over an update of Main Street overall and what 2020 has brought us and where we are going for the rest of the season. So really quickly, just want to go over kind of our COVID response and precautions that we've been taking. We have, as far as our farmer's market, we've set up a distant market, which kind of means that there are six to 10 feet in between each market booth. We'll go over how many booths and things like that we have a little bit later, but really looking to spread out our market as a whole. We also have hand sanitizer stations throughout the park as well that are, of course, free for any of the attendees and the vendors, and encouraging them to sanitize often and all the time, really. We've also had some virtual events. We participated in Nickel Plate Arts First Friday event on Facebook and have done other kind of Facebook Live and virtual events through that. We, of course, had to cancel some of our events. We've canceled Upstairs Downtown for the year and Street Dance, which was honestly heartbreaking for me. We've also really upped our merchant relations as far as all of that goes. We had biweekly calls with them. We did everything we absolutely could to brainstorm with them on how to fix and combat the things that they were going through. We were in constant contact with Kayla and the city with all of the small business grant that was so generously offered and was hugely helpful for them. So we've been in some constant contact with them overall. As far as our community enrichment, we've doubled the nonprofit booth at the market. So for those of you who don't know, we offer a free farmer's market booth to nonprofits. We usually just do one a week, but this year we've kind of doubled up because we have just an overwhelming interest from nonprofits wanting to get in front of the community and spread the word about the services that they offer. And we, of course, want to do everything we can to help that. So we've kind of doubled up on that. We've also offered a free farmer's market spot for downtown merchants of any, I guess, genre, restaurant store, anything like that. A great example of this is 9th Street Bistro. They took us up on the offer. They, of course, have not been able to open as planned because of COVID-19. So they're able to serve tons of food at the farmer's market. They've also started their supper club, which is kind of a, you pick it up on Sunday, and it's a frozen meal throughout the week. I've heard it's phenomenal. They also do a Nutella muffin that honestly is going to rival the egg rolls at our market, I'm pretty sure. It's pretty famous so far. So if you haven't tasted their food yet, come out to the market and do so. But it's been a huge, really game changer for them overall. We also offer free fitness classes at the market. We are partnering with local gyms and wellness studios overall to activate the market even further. All of these free fitness classes combined for one person, if they were to take them at the studio, would be over $300 for that person. So we really want to try and activate our market and also get people out and healthy and moving out and interacting in their community as safe as possible. We also have free masks at our farmer's market every week. We have partnered with the Hamilton grateful for and blessed by all of these people who have come alongside us to really help us better the downtown and make sure everyone down there is as alive and healthy and prospering as possible. These companies, plus other ones, have helped us exceed our annual fund goal for the year by 15% already. So that's huge.
Real quickly, we are not seeing this on these monitors. I don't know if there's
Oh, on your monitor.
IT in here. I think everybody can see it but me. I'm the only one that can't see it.
You guys can come stand behind me, I guess, I can see it. Yeah, there's a big screen.
I'm looking at it.
How about now?
That's a little backwards.
That's rough. No, still no.
Don't worry about it.
That's okay. They are included in your packet.
Yeah, we've got this.
They have paper, there's paper slides, too, that we did, so you could take them with you and look at them forever. So now I want to touch on way more fun stuff that's going on downtown and with our organization overall. The farmer's market is thriving. We have an average of 4,000 people per weekend, and that has upheld throughout this whole season. Our vendor spots are currently full at 73, and we have a waitlist of about 16 people that grows every week. And just to give you an idea, in the previous years, we pretty much maxed out at 100 vendors in the farmer's market. So I can kind of see that number is definitely down, but something that we are definitely willing to sacrifice just to keep everyone safe. So yeah, we're able to fill weekly vendor spots. So if a vendor is not able to be there one week, we have a list that we pull from and plug them into two different spots, which is awesome. Community engagement, virtual and in person overall, has pretty much skyrocketed. Like the other organizations I've mentioned that we're partnering with, we've also partnered with the schools. They have a mobile, I guess, library, for lack of a better word, program. We've partnered with them in the past. Usually, there's a bus, like a, it's called the bookmobile. It comes out to our farmer's market. Kids are able to rent the books and then return them. Obviously, it looks a little different this year, so we are a mobile book drop spot. So there's a tub that people can come and return their books and get new books at our farmer's market, which is awesome. We also have tons of organizations wanting to partner and give back to the community. Oh, sorry about that. Oh, look, farmer's market email. Did you see that? No? Okay. They're coming in. So yes, organizations wanting to partner and give back to the community, not only with our nonprofit spot, the farmer's market, but also the pop-up drive-in was an example of this with Wofford Theaters. Also, just fueled for school, we're always trying to get them in front of as many people as possible. Within just the last two months, our Facebook posts have reached almost 65,000 people with nearly 15,000 engagements. That's pretty impressive. We also are pushing 13,000 Facebook followers, and on our Instagram, we have over 25,000 impressions within the last two months of kind of like our COVID months, I guess. Need a better word for it. And we have about 2,500 Instagram followers, and that's always increasing and expanding. And we have about 2,500 Instagram followers, and that's always increasing and expanding. Another kind of example of a really bright spot that happened out of all of this is the merchants kind of got together and had lots of leftover, well, just an abundance of product in their stores because of when they were closed. So they wanted to do a big sidewalk sale, and they kind of got together and rallied the troops, and we promoted it. And there was flyers handed out to farmer's market. Turned out to be their best weekend literally ever. I have in here, Little Bloomers had higher sales than any Small Business Saturday, which was previous kind of like the benchmark day. So that was super encouraging, that people are coming out and shopping and really trying to shop small and support our local businesses. A few upcoming events that we have. We have some new things for the rest of the year. You all have our amended event calendar, so check that out. But these are kind of new things that are art on the calendar because we've kind of just thought them up and are working with them. But first, we have our dine and drink downtown. This is to encourage people to come out and frequent our shops and restaurants and bars, and also to encourage outdoor dining and takeout, which is something we're doing. We are closing down Logan Street between Ninth and Tenth. We really want to encourage people to bring their own chairs. We're going to have live music. We want them to eat and drink and get their tacos from taxi to taxi and come sit in the street and have a good time with their family, but also being out and shopping and eating at all of our great restaurants and bars. We also are working to expanding evening hours among merchants downtown with the help of some key merchants and some key community leadership, some of whom are in this room. We're partnering with Hamilton County Tourism, which is huge, to drive foot traffic downtown in the evening hours. Now, this, if you've been around for a while, you know this is a monumental task to happen in downtown. So we are working on it little by little, ultimately hoping that as the momentum builds that more stores and restaurants and things like that will want to stay openly to kind of capitalize on all the people that are going downtown. We're also working on some planned spontaneous activities in some downtown spaces such as street corners, alleys. The whole goal would be like if you're in a big city and you just come up upon a street performer, and it just makes the town feel alive and vibrant, and that's kind of what we want to do with local artists and musicians, just playing on the street corner or painting. What's it called? Plan air, I think is what I learned. Ailey's not here, she can correct me if she was. Plan our painting in our downtown, so just really cool opportunities for that. We also are working on a midweek market. So this is kind of, will be on a Wednesday. August 5th is the tentative date, not confirmed yet, but to further support our local farmer's markets and to encourage people to do their midweek shopping at the farmer's market. So it'll be kind of a little, a different feel, more of like, less of like the crafty vendors, more just like straight produce and food. We're also going to be encouraging people to have picnics in the park and have music on the stage for that as well, so that'll be really cool. Now, this one I'm pretty excited about, and I don't know if you've heard about it yet, but Nightmare on Main Street is kind of a crazy idea that the girls and I hatched out of our crazy little office downtown. And we polled social media because I was like, I don't know, this is, this is pretty crazy, and we haven't done anything like this before. We had an overwhelming positive response about people who would be attracted to an event like this. So the overall vision is that it's an adults-only Halloween party downtown. Picture like black and white silent horror film projected on the courthouse. We're going to talk to him. He can make all my like movie dreams come true. We'll have a costume contest, food, beer, a fun band, the whole kind of nine yards of an adult Halloween party fenced and all of that downtown. So keep an eye on that. Kind of the last big thing that we're planning this year to really create more attraction to our downtown, honestly, beer and alcohol scene is Spirits on the Square. So this is our take on a craft beer crawl. I don't know if you've ever participated in one before. It'll be pretty traditional, a ticketed event where you get a signature tasting glass, and then you get to go around to participating bars and restaurants and eat and drink. And again, just a way to bring people into our community, to show them how awesome and how really robust our food and beer and wine scene kind of is. So with that, that's kind of concludes my presentation for the evening, but I did want to open it up for any questions, quick questions that anyone has about anything that I talked about today or anything else.
Any questions?
Will the midweek market be at Federal Hill?
Yes, the goal is for it to be at Federal Hill and pretty much only activate like the plaza part, which is where the ice rink usually is, and then keeping all the grass open for people to come and picnic and listen to music and things like that. So if it's successful, we would love to do it like at least once a month. Of course, the dream would be that we have the demand to do it every single week, but I'm not sure about that one yet.
How many vendors do you think you'll attract there?
Yeah, so we have room for about 20 vendors there, and we've kind of handpicked the ones that we think will flourish in that environment, and that would be worth it for them. So again, if there's an overwhelming response to it, we can expand it to more vendors, for sure. Anything else?
Any other questions?
Awesome. Well, you all have my business card in your packet. Please feel free to reach out to me with anything and everything, questions that you have or anything.
All right. Thank you very much. Great job. And what, your new last name, you recently married?
Oh, yes, I did recently get married.
How do you spell that?
It's O-S-K-O-U-I-E. O'Scui. O'Scui, I know.
Get that, Ms. Lee's.
I know. I know. We talked about it earlier. Thanks, everyone.
Oh, okay, I didn't know. Thank you very much. Moving to our previously discussed ordinances, I'm going to read these two together, and we'll hear them together and then vote on those together. Ordinance 13-06-20, council to consider a change of zoning from R5 multifamily residential to R4 one and two-family residential for lots two and three of Trilogy of Prairie Lakes containing approximately eight acres. And then also 14-06-20, council to consider a change of zoning from R5 PB/PD multifamily residential and planned business plan development to R4 PB/PD one and two-family residential and planned business plan development, and an update of the preliminary development plan for Trilogy of Prairie Lakes as amended. Mr. Herschel.
Good evening, members of council. I am Dave Herschel. I'm with the Department of Planning. The ordinances in question were first considered on June 9th, so I'll give us a short summary. The property under consideration this evening is at the southwest corner of 146th Street and Cumberland Road. Ordinance 13-06-20 seeks rezoning of this property from R5 PD to R4 PD. You have in your packets everything that I'll put up here, so if you have paper copies, you should be able to refer to those. The site that's outlined in blue, or would have been outlined in blue, is, was approved in 2008 for a 100-unit independent living facility, as discussed on June 9th. The current application seeks the replacement of that 100-unit facility with 32, I'm sorry, 16 senior housing duplexes for a 32-unit total count. The Plan Commission recommended approval of these two ordinances on May 18th with no conditions. And it's based on the site plan that you saw on June 9th, so there's no new site plan for you this evening, although we do expect input on that and some updates from the property owner who is present. The sole contentious issue, as you remember, was parking on the property. The site plan that you have in front of you in your packets does meet UDO requirements for 2.0 units per dwelling unit. So the Plan Commission did recommend approval. Staff has a suggestion that might make it easier if the parking issues are still contentious and continue this evening. We would recommend if an impasse on the parking continues, that the council approve or make a motion to approve the plans as recommended by the Plan Commission with one of two conditions. Those are also in your packet. I'm going to read both of those. One condition may be, if you so choose, that if, in the opinion of more than one public official, a parking problem is seen to arise and persist within the boundaries of the property involved in these petitions after project build-out, the property owner will take steps to install 10 additional parking spaces within the property, reasonably distributed to serve all portions of the development, as agreed to through technical advisory committee review of new development plans. That means it would not come back to you. An alternative would be a condition that states, if, in the opinion of more than one public official, again, this could be the fire chief or any other public official that sees a site regularly, a parking problem is seen to arise and persist within the boundaries of the property involved in these petitions. After project build-out, the property owner will file a new application for amendment of preliminary plan with a proposed parking solution to be reviewed through Plan Commission and Common Council review. So one of those two conditions might help to alleviate any impasse that may arise or continue. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Herschel? Now, the two, these are both you guys, right? Manning and Smith Group? I don't have a name on here. Just Greg?
Greg.
Okay. If you would come forward.
Yep.
State your name, please.
Greg Schunk, S-C-H-U-N-C-K, Mannick and Smith Group, civil engineer, 20600, Suite 500, Shugrim Boulevard, Chaker Heights, Ohio. Good evening.
Good evening.
I also have with me this evening Peter Massey, Senior Vice President with Trilogy Health Services with Construction and Development.
Okay.
I think we're having some technical difficulties here. I have some printouts.
Please, yeah, if you would.
I can pass them down, sorry.
So we had some follow-up conversations throughout the weeks regarding parking. I think that was the outstanding issue. We came up with a game plan to talk about either including that now or possible if needed in the future.
It's a big piece of paper. It is live. No.
Was.
Yep. We have more trouble with that.
No. It's on.
It's on. We have set up language.
So there was some concern about parking for the site, number of parking, how the site was going to be used, and who's going to be living on site. It's 55 years or older, or no one under 55 allowed. So it's not as if you can be 55 with a family with any young children. It's not what the product that we provide. One or two-bedroom units. We do have single-car garage for each unit, and there are locations in the driveway, if you will, to stack two additional vehicles per unit. So you could technically have three cars per unit, based on the current layout that we have now, just several ones aware. Street will be private. It'll be built per city standards. It'll be maintained by campus. The units will be maintained by the campus as well. Rental units, the individuals will not own the units. Landscaping, trash, snow removal will all be done by the campus. This is part of the campus. The individuals living in these units will have access to activities at the main campus Is there any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. Any questions at all?
President? In looking at the site plan, the part that's in the gray that's highlighted, are those the 10 additional spaces that you're proposing to add at a later date in time if needed? Or you're adding those in now?
We're leaving that open. We'd like to leave the green space there if possible. We could grade those such that if we need to come in at a later date, they'd be graded out, so we can just come in and add those parking. But we do have room there for 10 spaces, 10 additional spaces, centralized, located for easy access to all the units.
I was just kind of curious. I still, I struggle with enforceability of a future problem. You know, what would determine, you know, what would determine the public officials? You know, what's the level of complaint that you would get from a public official would cause that to happen? And if we would continue to argue about whether they're needed or not, if we put some time constraints on, once we say, you got to do it, well, you know, can we do it? And I know you've got other projects that are successful. We unfortunately have seen in Noblesville some projects with the tandem spots that are not as successful and created some dangerous situations. So I'm still on the same spot I was before, to be perfectly honest. I'd like to see more parking incorporated, and I'd like to see this go in day one, and I'd like to see a spot where it's carved out to the west in addition to what you've shown in the center of the site.
Yeah. Peter Massey, Trilogy Health Services. So after our discussion and after, you know, reviewing this and going through, our proposal was these two additional lots to be built in the future if we saw an issue for it. It's a private road. It's something we're going to monitor. You got to take our word for that, I guess, but we are open to the suggestion that if you all have an issue with it, we can immediately put these in if you see that there's a parking concern. I don't know how, what metric we would measure that by, but we don't want parking on that road as much as you all don't want parking on that road. This is our residents' home. This is supposed to feel more residential, hence the green space, hence why we didn't load it up with more units, which I think we were allowed to do based on the size of the parcel. We've got a, quite honestly, we've got this same product in Greenfield that I've been fighting with the city on and on them wanting to make the road public and a cut through. And it's just, we don't, we don't want traffic on there. We don't want parking on there. We just, this is somebody's home. These are elderly, this is an elderly population. Even though it's 55-plus, the average age is going to be 75 to 80 of the residents living here. They're not going to have children under the age of, you're not going to have children living there at all. You only have two people total, and they have to both be 55-plus or older. There are events that would be at the community center that we would have, monthly brunches, if we ever get out of this COVID phase, and that kind of thing. And because of our main health campus and also the parking lot in our legacy, which is the building just to the north of this, of our, projected here, there's another parking lot there, we've got, you know, six-passenger golf carts and vans and stuff where we shuttle everybody over if we're going to do an event like that, community center where parking doesn't become an issue. So even on those days when we have more parking than what you would have for the actual villas, we still use our main lots versus the villas. I just, you know, at the end of the day, I'm not going to not build it because you all want more parking, but we're adamant that having what we have here, we've got this product in 30-plus of our campuses. We've never had an issue with parking. I can tell you, half these residents are not going to be driving or even have a vehicle. And the other half are going to have a vehicle, and they may go out once a week if that. It's retirement living. It's, we provide a, it used to be a town car, I don't know what it's called now, a Lincoln vehicle, that we can, we'll shuttle them to and from, we chauffeur them, that kind of thing. So, but I'm happy to answer questions, walk through any concerns you have for it. Like I said, I mean, we're willing to compromise here. It's not going to make or break whether we do the project.
Just reading this 55-year age restriction policy, which you, you put that.
We provided a lease to, I don't know, to the Planning Commission.
I don't know where this come from, whether this is a government-mandated, I don't have any idea. But the last item, see, it says at least one occupant of premises is age-qualified under the age restriction policy. Just tell me what that means.
What does it say?
It says at least one occupant of the premises is age-qualified under the age restriction policy.
Sure. It's not a government, thank you. It's not a government mandate. It's a policy that we enact, and we're, but we're legally allowed to restrict it by age, per regulation, you're allowed to do that.
I understand that, but that, in my mind, as I read that, that means one person can move in, it's over 55, and can have.
Sure.
Whatever age group.
I mean, I'm happy, I'm happy to add the language in there that it's, all occupants have to be 55 years or older, because that's our policy. So this could be a snippet of what's in there, but we don't allow anybody who's under 55.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand what.
Yeah. That may be the, you know, the Housing for Older Persons Act, that's probably, that's probably the language, the legal language around what allows us to restrict the age.
Sure.
But that's not, if you look. But that's not, if you looked at the full lease.
So your lease is going to restrict it?
Yes, absolutely.
And then I guess the other question is, it looks to me like the most parking you could add at this point, short of getting rid of the building, is 10, 10 additional spots.
That's, well, I mean, you could.
There are other places?
It's not built yet. You could, you could add parallel parking to the road and that kind of stuff. But again, I don't see the need for what, for, we haven't seen that need anywhere. But I mean, there's, that's all green space along on either side of the drive there except for where the actual units are. So technically you could add in some parallel spots along there as well to get more. I don't think there's, the way it's laid out with the detention basins, I don't think there's a way to get an actual lot to the west. And quite honestly, if we, if we saw a need for parking, I'd want them centrally located like that. Because who's to say the residents to the west are going to need more parking than the residents to the east? So that way you've got them on either side of the road that are centrally located.
Do you think having the parking would hurt your ability to move the units?
It's not going to hurt it. It's just, you know, it's just less green space. It's just something, I mean, and it's not even going to be a maintenance issue because really, I'm quite honestly, you're not going to get the traffic in there. But, I mean, it's, again, it's a green space thing. You've got, like, the two units to the south there and the ones in between the lot on the north, they'll probably lease slower than the other ones because no one wants to be next to a parking lot. They'd rather have the green space there. But is that going to prevent somebody from moving in? I mean, I don't know. You may hear somebody say that, but I don't think it's going to force it one way or the other.
My concern, I think Mr. Peterson alluded to it, and this is more of a legal question. If this is only a recommendation and not in the ordinance, how could we ever enforce it?
It would be in the covenants. They're going to be, by the covenants, will be reviewed by staff. So the two issues, the age restriction and what was your other, your commitment to build the additional spaces, it's not, you're not like a subdivision where, you know, you got an HOA, this, that, this is the sole source owner. It's in the covenants. And if you want to, they can hinder some language if they need to be done to have it be done.
But are we okay if they sell it? Because that's been the problem in the past is if they?
If it's recorded in the covenants with the property, it's not only enforceable against them, but their successors entitled. That's why we got all those documents in the records office. And it'll kick up on their title policy dislike, easements or mortgages will kick up on their title policy.
I personally feel like the parking needs to be built now, not after the fact. I think it's hard to monitor it to, I don't, every, I've heard several people talk about the parking. Whether it's adequate or not, attend spaces, I can't answer. But it's more than what was offered before.
Mr. President, I, I would echo Mr. Peterson's concerns. My grandmother lives in a neighborhood like this and I know that we are totally the outlier because we have a massive family, but we always go over there for dinner. And I would be concerned from a public safety perspective of getting a public safety vehicle through this neighborhood, especially since it's a private street and we don't have enforceability here. So those are my concerns.
Mr. Peterson? I don't think the, I don't think the big events are a problem and I don't think the weekday is the problem. I think it's Sunday afternoon when, when you have gatherings and people come to visit for two or three hours and it's raining. So I'm going to, I'm just going to park in the street for a few minutes and it turns into 10 people parked in the street for 10 minutes and then we got an issue because somebody makes a call. So that's, that's where I'm at. I still, I still think we need to make it a condition that it goes in on day one. That it goes in now rather than wait and see.
So you're comfortable with the 10, 10 additional parking spots?
Yes, I'm more comfortable, yeah.
So we could amend this ordinance to add the 10 spots and you would be?
10 spots and the age.
Yeah, ma'am, yes.
So would they, would they be in the covenants or in the ordinance? Because I don't know that the city enforces covenants.
We just amend the site plan, right?
Or the ordinance.
So if someone feels that strongly, you can make a motion, right, Mr. Howard, to amend the ordinance, like the 10 spots that are?
Amend the ordinance, yes.
That way we could get it done tonight, right? Rather than delaying this?
We can do it either way tonight.
Yeah.
You can amend the ordinance. Now, if you amend the ordinance, it still has to go back to the planning commission. I think they, for their recurrence.
We're allowing them first time. So are we done? Can I make a motion?
Thank, are there any more questions or comments?
President, I would like to make a motion to approve, oh gosh, I forgot what item is. Please hold.
You have to amend it.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve 13.
No, we're just amending 14.
Are we doing it at the same time?
Well, we have to amend 14 first.
Okay. I would move to approve or amend 140620 to include the 10 extra spots as seen in the site plan during construction. I'm not going to, that one.
That's already been, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's already been added.
Yeah, I don't, that one.
The ages. Yeah. But not the parking is not in there. Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion to amend 140620 to include the 10 spots that are shown on the diagram at construction, at the time of construction.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is this a hand vote? So this is a hand vote for item 140620 to amend that ordinance. All those in favor, raise your right hand. En, I guess it's, yeah, I guess it's just heated. Okay. So now can we still do these together?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so. Okay. So we, go ahead. Let's do 130620 first.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve 130620.
Second.
Motion and a second. This is a roll call for item 130620. Ms. Lees?
Mr. Herr.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Forts.
Aye.
Mr. Smith. Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
Eight aye, one nay. The ordinance is adopted.
Now we need a motion for 140620 as amended.
President.
O'Connor.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 14-06-20 as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 140620 as amended. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lees?
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
No.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
No.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Mr. Herr.
Aye.
Mr. Hampton.
Aye.
That's seven aye, two nay. The ordinance is adopted as amended.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to new ordinances for discussion. Item 1607-20, council to consider ordinance number 160720, an ordinance amending the traffic schedule in Chapter 78 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Noblesville. Krupski.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ali Krupski, Noblesville Engineering. Need to introduce? Today, I'm.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need a motion to introduce.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to introduce 160720.
Second.
Now, Ms. Krupski, sorry about that.
No, no problem.
I knew cheaters. I didn't see that part.
This evening, I am requesting and asking you to consider an ordinance to amend the traffic schedule in Chapter 78 of the Traffic Code. We will be asking to update Schedule 3 and add Schedule 12. So within Schedule 3, this is more of a routine update. We are going to update for intersection control upgrades that were done in 2018 and 2019. Three of our intersections were changed from stop controlled to yield controlled for roundabout improvements that we did at Field Drive and Cumberland, Greenfield Avenue and Howe, and 19th and Pleasant. And then the remainder of these are just changes from new development that happened or other capital improvements that we did. So you guys have a list of all those in your packet, but this is pretty routine updates that we do each year. Schedule 12, we are adding this one, and this is a result of the downtown alley pedestrian activation program. This is going to provide in addition within the code that allows alleys to be restricted from vehicular use. So right now, we are just doing the North Alley, which begins at Logan Street and is between 8th and 9th Street. And then at completion of the Levinson, we will also come back and amend that for, to add the South Alley as well. This ordinance will give us the ability for pedestrian activation, but will not relinquish our land rights to these alleys. If you guys have any questions, let me know and thank you for consideration of the updates.
Thank you. Any questions now? It has.
Thank you.
Next item, 170720, council to consider ordinance number 170720, an ordinance setting sewage rates for the City of Noblesville.
President, I'd make a motion to introduce 170720.
Second.
And a second. Mr. Light.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, Matt Light, Deputy Mayor for the Record, appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight about some proposals that we bring, are bringing forward to make some adjustments that we think are necessary to invest in our critical infrastructure and our core services. Just a moment, I'll have some information up on the screen. The wastewater rate adjustment and the trash fee increase, that's, that's the next agenda item. They're separate ordinances, of course, they're separate, based on separate sets of, you know, factors that contribute to those recommendations. But as we analyze these issues, we considered them together because they go on the same monthly bill. They impact, of course, you know, monthly budgets of our residents. And we've engaged in extensive analysis to, you know, ensure that these recommendations are well-founded in our view and we continue to work to keep these costs low. In terms of timing, we know that a rate adjustment can be a difficult thing in any environment. And we're cognizant of the fact that we're not in any normal environment right now. And in fact, that during this public health emergency, a lot of our residents have lost jobs or have had significant economic impact. And going through this process, Mayor Jensen insisted upon having a robust and expanded hardship program associated with any rate adjustment that we would bring forward related to either wastewater rates or trash fees. The proposal that's in front of you to adjust the wastewater rates would include up to a quarter million dollars in hardship credits. And I'll talk about the corresponding hardship credits that would be available with the trash bill in a few moments. Before I go further, though, I want to mention that we have some other folks here that are available to provide expertise and answer questions. Scott Miller from Baker Tilly, the city's financial advisor, and Ray Thompson, our wastewater utility director. And in a few minutes, if it's okay with the president, I'd like to ask Scott to provide some more analysis about the rate study that they performed and the factors and the process that goes in to that. I also wanted to highlight this new webpage that I hope you can see on your screens. It's up on the, up on the big screen here, that we worked with the wastewater department, with the, the street department and our communications department to create, to provide information to residents about, you know, what goes into this analysis. This is available by going to the city's homepage. And if you go to the utilities, I'm sorry, to the department dropdown at the top of the homepage, go to the utilities department, there's a link at the top of that page. So I would encourage you to go there, direct constituents to that page if they have questions or concerns. And if you find that there are issues or questions that we haven't addressed on that page, please let us know and we'd be glad to add more information to that as we go forward. But this really, and I'll, I'll go through a couple of additional slides that have some, some of the kind of infographics and details from that page. But it's an effort to really just explain our, our processes in going through the analysis of necessary funds to be available really to pay our bills in the wastewater context and then in the trash context as well. The wastewater rate itself, it's necessary, again, to, to make sure that we have enough money to do what's, to do what we have to do to maintain our infrastructure. And as you know, we have some aging infrastructure in this city. We're the oldest city in the county. We have some unique factors that we have to deal with to preserve and upgrade that infrastructure. We have significant needs on lifts, with Lift Station 2 on Allisonville Roads, on Allisonville Road, some significant needs as well with Lift Station 9 on Little Chicago Road. And we also have to complete the fifth phase of the long-term control plan that many of you are aware of, that started back in 2007. And the work that's going to be happening during this fifth phase is going to be focused in the Old Town and Southwest Quad parts of the city. So those, those projects that I talked about really are going to be going on in various parts of the city to support that, that infrastructure going forward. The, the long-term control plan, there's information on the website. This may be hard to see on this screen, but I would encourage you to take a look at that on the webpage and we can, we can answer any questions, of course, if you have them. But a lot of work has gone into this, this effort. And this is really an unfunded mandate that we've had to come up with, with dollars to address. This was something that was first required by the Department of Environmental Management back in 2007. It's a 15-year plan that consists of nine individual projects in five phases. Information is there about the first four that have been completed. And I think it's important in terms of, you know, the context of rates where they are now, excuse me, and the, the rate recommendation to go back to the projection that Baker Tilly, their predecessor company, Umball, provided to the city in 2006 when we were embarking on this plan. At that time, they projected that based on the costs that, that would go into these, all of these phases, that the city would likely be at around $66.93 a month at the end of this, of these five phases in 2022. And so through four of these five phases, we're at 4178. And even with this proposed increase, it would be still $20 less than what was projected in 2006. So our proposed new rate, after performing this analysis, would be $46.13 for the residential users. And I'll go to this next slide here, which shows some comparisons with neighboring communities, which was helpful for comparisons to kind of how we're doing with central Indiana communities in this context. And you can see that where we are currently and where we would remain in terms of being in the, the, kind of the midpoint in the lower half of those, of those communities. And also important to note that several of the cities and towns that are listed there have not adjusted their fees in several years. Many of those may be looking at doing that in the near future. So that would just put us most likely even further to the left of, of that screen. And then when you go to the next page, again, we talked about the combined bill and being cognizant of, of that and the impact on, on residential budgets. This one adds the trash fee on top of the wastewater adds the trash fee on top of the wastewater fee, and again, shows where Noblesville, um, compares, um, to those neighboring communities in central Indiana. So the hardship program, I, I wanted to go back to that and provide some additional details and can answer questions about that. The hardship, um, program, again, I mentioned that Mayor Jensen insisted that we have that included in any proposal that we brought to you to adjust rates and, uh, to really have it as a central feature of this proposal, given the, the circumstances that we're in and the circumstances that many of our residents are dealing with. So this would, uh, provide for, um, up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars total in hardship credits, and it would allow, so if you, um, multiply that or divide that out, I should say, that would, uh, allow for coverage of two thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight residents if they're eligible, um, based on the parameters that we're proposing. If you could show, uh, proof that you filed for any of the following, unemployment with the state's workforce development department, hardship accommodation with the department of revenue, um, which can apply to independent contractors and quarterly tax estimates, uh, financial assistance from the township trustees office, or energy assistance from the light heat program, the low-income and, uh, home energy assistance program, then you can, uh, be approved for this hardship, this COVID hardship, um, if you indicate that your, uh, your circumstance was based in part on, uh, economic conditions that were created by, by, by this, uh, public health emergency. So if that's approved, then it would take fifteen dollars off of that, um, the wastewater rate, um, and then correspondingly, the same eligibility parameters would be in place for the trash fee, um, and it would be a fifty percent reduction of the trash fee. So, uh, you see the, the hardship rate, if you will, would be thirty-eight oh six. So, um, that would provide over, uh, a six-month period, uh, starting in, uh, September with the September bill that's payable October, by October fifteenth, uh, through the February bill, um, uh, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars worth of, of benefits or hardship discounts, if you will, for, for those individuals. In terms of other financial relief that we've provided, uh, during this, um, public health emergency, just wanted to mention in relation to this proposal, um, the wastewater department has not been imposing, uh, late payment penalties, uh, since the public health emergency was declared. Um, so that's, um, I guess refrain from adding twenty-five thousand dollars in the aggregate based on, um, averages in the past, um, to, to bills of those folks that may be struggling at this time. Um, we've also, uh, in your, in the ordinance that's in front of you, uh, proposed adjusting the existing discount, um, which is currently ten dollars for those people that have, uh, filed property tax deductions, um, with the county auditor's department, either over age sixty-five or blind and disabled individuals, uh, bumping that from ten dollars a month to twelve dollars a month to be, um, largely comparable with a percentage discount that existed before this, this adjustment. And this proposal also includes corresponding, uh, percentage adjustments to the industrial and commercial, commercial, uh, rates. One more thing to mention, kind of in the overall context of paying for the infrastructure and the improvements in this, in this context, we're also taking a look at tap-on fees and doing some comparisons with neighboring communities and expect to be engaging, uh, the development community and the council further, uh, later this year to take a look at what might be appropriate there, um, to, to cover costs, um, that may come with, uh, growth in Noblesville. Uh, two more things to, to add, and then, um, would be glad to answer your questions, and then, um, would ask if, if Scott could add, um, his context from the rate study. This proposal, unlike in previous years, would be a one rate that would be constant for four years. So you'll note in the ordinance that it makes it clear that it takes effect September first and it runs through, uh, twenty twenty-four. So that provides for more budgeting cer- certainty, both for the individuals, the residents, as well as for the city. And the, uh, final point that I'll mention, and this goes into, and it kind of segues to Scott's, uh, remarks, but the analysis that went into, uh, this, this rate study and the rate recommendation, uh, it allows for us to maintain cash reserves, um, that are appropriate for us to maintain our strong bond rating, which ultimately lowers the cost of our borrowing over time, which has that benefit, uh, to our residents. So I appreciate your consideration and, and tolerance of my lengthy remarks, but wanted to provide that all, um, so that you had that context, and would be glad to answer your questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Deputy Mayor Light? Mr. Air.
Uh, Mr. Light, I, I know I brought it up in the previous meeting that we, that I had with you. The, the sewer, sewer tap-on fees, I mean, there's a, a large proportion of, of this rate increase entails, I think it's about thirteen million dollars to, to do the lift station down on, um, Allisonville Road to accommodate future development on the east side of thirty-seven. Um, I think it's, and I don't know what we have to go through to raise sewer tap-on fees, um, whether you can answer that, Mr. Howard, but, uh, I'm, I'm fairly confident we are not where we should be with those tap-on fees, and I'd like to see that we increase those or put them at a level that new development will help pay for itself and we don't have to keep going back and asking the current citizens to help pay for that new development. And I know it won't pay for all of it. What's the timeframe it takes to enact and, and put those fees into effect? Do we have to go through a big study? I mean, I, I don't know what we have to go through to raise.
We're, we're gonna be, uh, at least a, a rate study, but you're, you're correct, the two thousand, or the two thousand seven hundred and fifteen tap-on fee, I know it's been there for twenty-five years, and, uh, uh, I know that I talked to deputy mayor who were coming in, and, you know, they're looking at other communities, not like the Barco's you've got there, but, uh, I guess how long would it take, uh, to do the rate study or whether or not, uh, we would just, you know, go forward based on what other communities are doing, but I would think that that, the administration would be moving forward, wanna move forward with that pretty quickly.
Yeah, that, that's correct. The internal analysis has already begun, and our, our plan is to bring that back to you by the end of this year. It would be a change to the same ordinance, um, you'll note it at some points in the packet, this, that fee is listed, it's not changed in this proposal.
Right, I, I know it's, yeah. And that, that's why as I went through this thing, I mean, there's four different fees in there. I don't, I don't know what they all entail, I know the one at twenty-seven fifteen, but there's another fee in there at twenty-one sixty.
There's some cleanup that's necessary.
Yes, and, and there, there is a lower fee for those that are, uh, that have existing service in, um, nearby, and, and I think it should be lower, but if we're providing services that, that have to go further out, that should be, uh, the tap-on fee should incur, you know, help incur that cost.
Any other questions for Mr. Light? Okay. No one want to come up?
Thank you. Good evening, councilors. Uh, my name is Scott Miller, I'm a partner with Baker Tilly here in Indianapolis, good to be back in front of you again. Mr. Light asked me to give you a bit of a real quick background of what goes into a rate study, since we have some new councilors that haven't been through this process before. So I'll take just a, a minute or two to do that and then, uh, turn to the results from this study. So at the end of each year, one of the, uh, processes that we help the utility with is to help them close their year-end financial statements and, and prepare the financial statements that ultimately find their way into the city's comprehensive annual financial report. We also use those financial statements to put together a year-end, uh, financial management report for, uh, the wastewater administration staff to help them analyze how things are looking from a financial perspective and, and be able to make decisions and budget going forward. This year, we took that information based on calendar year two thousand and nineteen and went straight into the rate study process. Indiana statute, uh, lays out the specific items that wastewater rates and charges are allowed to recover, and we refer to those as revenue requirements, and, and they are comprised of the, the day-to-day operating expenses of the utility, uh, debt service, uh, principal and interest payments on outstanding bonds, uh, funding a debt service reserve, uh, and capital improvements, uh, to the system. And so as we went through this year-end process and then transitioned into the rate study process, we're looking at, at all of those items, uh, in terms of what was spent in two thousand and nineteen and in prior years, uh, and compare that to what is budgeted on a going-forward basis, both, uh, for this upcoming year, but then also, um, looking out a little bit farther to see, uh, when we think adjustments in rates and charges are gonna be necessary. So as part of that, we look at the expenses, we, we determine whether or not there are any adjustments that need to be made, uh, to take into account what we think's gonna happen on a going-forward basis, and that includes, uh, changes to salaries and wages and benefits, costs of chemicals, power, all, all those sorts of things that it takes to operate the utility on a daily basis. We also look at what the wastewater utility needs on an annual basis to take care of ongoing, uh, capital improvements to the system, to maintain what you already have and, and make sure that it's operating, uh, at its peak and efficient capacity. The last piece of that, uh, kind of related to capital improvements is, is what other bigger projects are out there that need to be addressed, that we're not gonna be able to fund on a pay-as-you-go basis through rates and charges, and we don't have enough cash for and are gonna have to borrow money. Uh, and, and so that's what led us to this, uh, led us, through this process and led us to this, uh, conclusion tonight with this rate study. Uh, as you've heard, there are a number of, uh, improvements, uh, that need to be done. The estimated cost of those projects is on the screen right now. Uh, it includes, uh, as Mr. Light mentioned, the two lift stations, as well as phase five for the long-term control plan, and all total, uh, those projects cost just a little bit under twenty-three million dollars. The way that we anticipate funding that project is shown at the very bottom, and you should all have a, a copy of the rate study in your packet. Um, but let me go over the funding, uh, just a, a minute and a little bit more detail, just because of the, the question that came up, uh, just a second ago about the, uh, availability fee. As far as funding goes, we're anticipating a bond issue of, of about thirteen point five million dollars, and then the balance of, of the funding is gonna come from cash on hand that the utility already has. Uh, the next line down, two million four twenty-five, those are remaining bond proceeds that are left over from the two thousand seventeen bond issue. That project was completed, uh, the work is done, but we still have funds that are left over, uh, largely because bids came in, uh, less than anticipated and, and the work was done, uh, more efficiently than originally thought, so we've got those dollars a, available to use for this next project. The remaining items then are, uh, funds that are cash that has been accumulated. Uh, in the utility funds, uh, the next line down, two million dollars comes from the operation and maintenance fund, and then the rest of, well, and then a, a little bit from bond and interest, fifty-nine thousand eight hundred. Then the last three items there are plan expansion fund, interceptor expansion fund, and emergency account. Uh, that's about, what, four, four point eight, four point five million dollars or so. Those dollars are the accumulation of, uh, availability and tat fees that new customers have paid as they've connected to the system, uh, that fee that we were just talking about. So one of the ways that the utility has been able to go from that sixty-six dollar estimate that we had back in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, at the very start of the long-term control plan, to where we're at right now, is because you've had that availability fee in place and had been collecting those dollars, and the utility has been setting those aside for these projects. So I agree, it is time to update it, it's, it's stale, it, it needs to be looked at, but it has helped you quite a bit, uh, in terms of getting to this point at a lot lower cost than what we might have anticipated fifteen years ago. So, uh, that's a, a very good outcome for all of the ratepayers of the utility. Once we look at the cost of the project and, and how we're gonna fund that project, we then turn back to what are the total revenue requirements to, to operate the system, and that's what's summarized here on, on, uh, the schedule. Starting at the top, we've got revenues that, uh, we anticipate collecting, um, we're at about thirteen point three million dollars based on a normalized two thousand and nineteen. If you recall, we had the last phase of the prior adjustment in rates go into effect July first of, of last year, so we had a, a small six-month adjustment for that, plus we've added some new customers. So as is, whereas if we do nothing else, we're expecting about thirteen point three million dollars, uh, revenues this year. We've got an assumed, uh, growth amount of four hundred EDUs per year, um, that we include. We've deducted a little bit of, of money, uh, an anticipated amount of money for the extended hardship program that, uh, Mr. Light spoke about, uh, a short while ago, and then we add in some miscellaneous income, plus the income generated from the rate increase. Right below that top section, we get into the budget requirements or the revenue requirements, and the, the first line under that section is the cash operating expenses. We estimate it'll be about seven point four million dollars this year and will increase to about eight point one million dollars out in twenty twenty-three. Below that, we have the debt service on the outstanding bonds, uh, we have, uh, three and a very small part of one bond issue left outstanding. If you recall, at the end of last year, we did a refunding or refinancing of the two thousand and eleven bonds that was done in, in an unusual, slightly unusual way in that we've got a forward delivery, uh, closing on those bond issues. So we've got one payment, uh, left this year on those two thousand and eleven bonds, and then in twenty twenty-one, we'll close on the new bond issue, the refunding bond issue, and, and you'll see th- those twenty-one, twenty-one bonds at the bottom of that section. Then we have the two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fifteen, and two thousand and seventeen bonds, those were, uh, largely for the funding of, uh, big chunks of the long-term control plan, and then the twenty twenty bonds that, uh, are gonna fund these proposed projects here. All total, our revenue requirements are just under, uh, fourteen million this year, and then climb to about fourteen point nine million out in twenty twenty-three, and that's, uh, in, in comparing that revenue requirement out in twenty twenty-three versus the revenue that we have under the current rates, that's where we determine the amount of increase that's necessary to fund this project going forward, so that we can, uh, allow the utility to continue to operate efficiently and effectively and meet all of its requirements, uh, to service that debt, and to also maintain the, uh, utility's credit rating with Moody's. You have a, a double A-two credit rating right now, uh, on your outstanding debt, and, and that is a very strong credit rating for, uh, an Indiana utility, uh, an Indiana municipal utility, and, and so we wanna do everything that we reasonably can to preserve that, because that's another thing that has allowed you to go, uh, fifteen years and go from sixty-six dollars to, uh, forty-six dollars in terms of the rate. By, by having that strong credit rating, your cost of borrowing is less than, than other utilities are faced with, a- and that has really been to your advantage. So th- that's the analysis that we went in, went into at a very high level. Uh, we've had a number of meetings with wastewater staff, with, uh, administration staff, folks in the controller's office, to go through these numbers and, and fine-tune things, uh, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that, that you have. Oh, I should, I should point out, um, we do have the adjustment here to the, the flat rate for the residential customers, the, the commercial customers are still, commercial and industrial, are still billed with a volumetric and a base monthly charge. Those rates are increasing as well by the, the same percentage as the, the residential customers, they're just billed a little bit differently, um, and don't have that flat rate, but their rates are going up by, by the same percentage as, as everybody else. So with that, happy to answer any questions that, that anyone has.
Any questions? Yeah, Mr. O'Connor.
Scott, the, the slide you just had up there.
Yeah.
On the cap X line or the capital improvements, is that just ongoing annual maintenance, the two point one, two point one, one point nine, I'm assuming that.
That's right. That's right. The utility has a, an annual budget, uh, or a capital improvements budget that they update, a- and those are the amounts necessary to fund that budget, and, and those are the items that a- occur on an annual basis that need to be taken care of to continue to operate.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, uh, on the first page you had up, I might have missed this, but what's the, um, other category that's on the... The no, non-construction cost, three down, one eighty-six.
Three.
Hundred and eighty-six thousand in the late, phase five, long-term.
Column two.
How far down the phase?
Excellent question. Do you recall, off the top of your head, what the... I'll have to get back to you.
That, that's, that's fine, I was just, when I was going through.
That's a great question, other is not very descriptive.
Yeah.
Other, it's other, it's other.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well.
I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll clean that up and put a better description in there. Um, there was some question, I, I believe, about the, the nature of the report, right now it says internal use only. Um, what we wanted to do is present this study to the council, once the council has a chance to think about it, consider action on this ordinance, uh, if the council... If the council decides to pass an ordinance, we'll provide a final rate study that has that disclaimer removed. We'll clean up that item, so it's clear what other is, and you'll have that then for your files as well.
Aaron, I think that's what accountants call not material in scope.
Anyone else? Any questions for Scott? Ray, did you want to add anything at all, or does anybody have any questions for Mr. Thompson?
Thank you.
Just while he's here, he's spent the whole night here. No? Yes? I'm just opening it up for any questions? No? Okay, he's good. Thank you.
Mr. President, I have just to make a comment. I think that Ray and his team have done a terrific job, and I know the Wastewater Committee from the council spent a fair amount of time working with Ray, but our infrastructure is second to none, and as was mentioned earlier, some of it is rather aged. So, you know, maintaining that system and keeping up with the growth and, you know, I give them a lot of credit for something that most of us just take for granted, but frankly, it's a highly valuable asset for the city. So these are always challenging because nobody wants to pay more money, but at the end of the day, it's a service that I think is well-priced, and our assets are well-maintained, and we're going to need more of it. So, but kudos to Ray and his team and the administration for being cognizant of the current situation that we're in from an economic perspective. So thanks for everything you're doing.
Okay. I know we've talked some about that in other ordinance, but the next item on the agenda is item 180720, the council to consider ordinance 181720, an ordinance setting trash and recycling fees for the city of Noblesville.
President motion to introduce.
Second.
Has been introduced. Mr. Light.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, Matt Light, deputy mayor, appreciate the opportunity to explain some of the factors that went into this proposal that's in front of you. The proposed new trash rate in the ordinance is $13.85 per month, representing the city's cost for providing this service over a four-year period. The previous trash collection contract expired at the end of May, so we had the, really the analysis done and the proposal ready then, but we wanted to stage it to go at the same time as the wastewater proposals for the reasons that I stated earlier. Prior to the end of that contract, we'd issued an RFP seeking proposals from firms that provide this type of service, received two responses, and Republic Services, who had been providing the service for the city, was the lowest responsible bidder. So this provides for some continuity of service, same pickup day for residents, same containers, same large item pickup process, as well as the continuity of service with city facilities and city-sponsored events. The trash fee was first initiated at $10.57 in a month in 2016, and perhaps interestingly, depending on your perspective, the, we were paying the vendor at that time $11.63 a month. So we had a gap between what the city was paying to procure the service and what we were collecting from our residents, so the city budget has been supplementing, if you will, that gap. This proposal eliminates the gap and allows us to really recoup from the residential users what we're paying to procure the service. We think that's more appropriate in the grand scheme of things, more transparent, and is consistent with Indiana code provisions that allow for those costs to be recouped. I think it's also interesting to consider, and Craig Lutz from Republic Services, who's here tonight, has been helpful in providing some information about really the trash collection and recycling collection industry, and some of the factors that go into their costs and some of the trends that have existed in that context. But I mentioned that 2016 rate that we were paying. Since then, there's a water sewer trash collection index of the Consumer Price Index, and it's gone up between 3% and 4% each year since 2016, so that kind of gives you what the current proposed fee would be. There's a significant factor, and Craig could certainly speak to it better than I could, but the discontinuance by China in buying recyclables from the United States has had a significant impact on their ability on Republic and other providers' ability to make, cover some of their expenses in selling recyclable commodities. And there's a feature, though, that we negotiated into this contract, which is one of the first in the state to have cost sharing if and when they ever do have, make a profit on selling those recyclable commodities. We don't necessarily expect that that will come to fruition in the near future, but if it does, that's something that can be a benefit to the city and to the city budget and to being able to cover, provide dollars for other services, or perhaps adjust this fee in the future. There's also, I think, an opportunity for us to engage in some education and outreach with residents on more effective recycling, so that we don't have as high of a contaminant rate in what is put in the recycling containers, which can impact the ability to ultimately sell those commodities. In terms of the value of what the, I guess what the city is getting and what the residents are getting for the dollars involved, I thought it was interesting, another couple of statistics that Craig provided, during the shutdown order, state home order, with a lot of folks being at home doing more carryout, they saw around a 25% increase in residential volume. And that didn't, you know, that didn't raise the rates, right? And they expect to see around an 8% kind of sustained increase over previous averages as habits have changed, even with, you know, some of the reopening, some of the habits that have changed with more takeout, more house and yard projects and things along those lines. As I mentioned earlier, the same COVID hardship eligibility criteria that would be, that's included in the wastewater proposal is included in this trash ordinance that's in front of you, and it's a 50% discount of the new amount, which would be a $6.92 discount off of that monthly fee. And again, as I showed earlier, the, kind of the comparison of the trash fee rates, we were cognizant of looking at neighboring communities in this context as we did our analysis, and think that we remain competitive for the value of the services that we're getting. So again, Craig Lutz is here. If you have any questions for him, Patty Johnson's been intimately involved in this process as well, and I appreciate your consideration of this proposal, and we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Light? I have one real quickly about the hardship. Did you say that it's only a six-month hardship for the COVID, right?
That's correct.
Now, what happens if we're still in this world six months from now? Do they reapply for that hardship?
So we talked about that at length. The plan or the proposal that we would make would be to have this operate for six months, and with a commitment that we would continue to analyze the, you know, the condition of the economy, how many take advantage of this option, how many need to take, to exercise this option, I should say, and if it appears that it would be appropriate to look at some type of an extension, that we would bring that back for your consideration, leading up to the end of that six-month timeframe.
No, first time we went through this, I was a little disappointed in the education for the 65 and older. Now, there's two different groups, it's the 65 and older, and now it's the COVID. What are the plans to try to help the residents understand and connect to how they get involved in the discounts?
Yeah, it's a great question. I think it's multifaceted. Talked about the webpage that we've created, will continue to draw attention to that. I know that Ray's team, Jerry Anderson, and the billing team at Wastewater, that field questions and concerns about the bill, you know, work with individual residents, and we'll make sure that they're aware of this option and provide some assistance in answering questions if they have any. And we'll look at other ways to kind of publicize the availability of that for residents that may need to take advantage of that option.
Website is really good. Nice job whoever put that together. I don't know if those are there. Any other questions, comments? Good? Okay. Any questions for him?
Yeah, if you're not going to come up and speak, I'll call you out, I guess. I'm kind of fascinated with recycling. I know we spoke that it isn't that other countries aren't taking our recycling, it's that it's gone from 3% to half a percent contamination.
Help him, help Ms. Lee's real quickly.
Oh, yeah, your name. I'm sorry. Craig Lutz, home Noblesville, 188 Wembley Way, so here in Noblesville, so longtime resident. I have a deck, but with an hour and a half going through, I figure we just talk and have a conversation. Trash is not that sexy of a deal, so, you know. But the recycling market, so I always say is there's three major things that in the last, or two, in the last three years, it's really flipped our industry to a whirlwind. COVID, as Deputy Mayor Light just mentioned, the COVID impact of just the trash that flipped. It switched from the businesses to the home at the curb, more tonnage on the routes, on the trucks, more time, labor, time spent, you know, that, how that math kind of works out. We're seeing that kind of come back, but we still are unknown. A lot of people are still unknown about what they're going to do, going out to eat, or do they do carryouts, shipits have gone up big, the Uber Eats and things like that. I think that's going to be sustainable throughout time. So I think we'll see more volume on the residential units at the home than we see at the businesses. So that's kind of how that's played out. But we talked about the recycling industry. The recycling industry really took a big impact about 36 months ago, and we saw it here in the Midwest for the last 24 months. And it's all this thing called the China National Sword, and what the heck is the China National Sword? And let me try to kind of unpack it a little bit. China was the largest buyer of United States and Canadians recyclable goods. So when you have the largest buyer of any type of a product that goes away and says they're going to shut their ports down and shut their barges down, it really takes a major impact on the economics and the simple supply and demand of the chain. So the surplus comes back, domestic mills are not ready to handle the volume, so, you know, price then goes down. But the other impact that has happened prior to China is also the trends, and the trends and the market trends. So you think of what we put in our residential recycling cart, or your curb, or the container. In the back history, when we all kind of started getting into recycling back in the 80s and the 90s, newspaper, newspaper was the number one thing. Well, how many people get a newspaper anymore, right? You know, the Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Sunday newspapers. We all get it on our smartphones and tablets and things of that nature. So newspaper, newsprints dropped down dramatically. And then we think, think this thing's called lightweighting. You think about, look at your water bottles that you have on your desk, you take a couple of good swings on it, it barely holds up. It takes 492,000 water bottles today to make one ton of plastic water bottle, where it used to take 42,000. So that is a lot more transactions, a lot more lists, a lot more labor time to pick up that same ton of material. Those two things hit, and then the China National Sword hits, where you have the biggest supplier, the biggest buyer goes out of the market, and then all this demand comes in, and these mills can demand the best of the best. So now, usually processors or plants like the Republic Services that we have that processes all the Noblesville material, and the waste managements of the worlds that have the waste management's largest recycling facility in the Chicagoland markets, you know, they process them, they take all this stuff and sort it into the single commodity lines. Well, these mills now demand a 99.5% less contamination volume, and that's what a big huge impact of it is, almost next to perfect that you have to have this one product line to send out. China set it up as it used to be less than 3%, and now it's 99.5%. So we're getting material that's coming in, that's usually about 28 to 30, sometimes even 35% contamination, the raw material. And in any type of a manufacturer, you think your raw material that has that type of contaminants, but on the back end, it's got to be near perfect. So it slows down your lines, causes more labor on the front end, more inspectors on the back end, more pre-sorders, things like that. So all that makes costs. So you think of the recycling industry back in the old days, and that's where the reset really came into play, and that's where kind of the big numbers in. We got to make sure we cover the cost to collect at the curb, so the flows of the market and the commodities markets, we can stay durable through these programs. That's where the big numbers come into play.
Craig, I've got to ask you, what is the price of OCC done?
Interesting that you say that. It dropped dramatically. So back when China was buying it, and the big companies called Nine Dragon, was one of the biggest box companies in the world, it was selling about 105, 110, up to 150 a ton of cardboard. The commodity market took, and the China Sword slammed it, and it dropped down to the low of about $30 a ton. But it was interesting, during COVID, cardboard and paper actually jumped up for a short period of time. It jumped up to about 80 to 85 a ton. Why? If you remember, when COVID first started, it was hard as heck to find toilet paper. You know, and all that, all that drove the paper mills to say, give me more, give me more, give me more. It's reset back again, and it's trading right about now about 50 to 45 a ton. It's still not near as where it used to be. But in general, we see about cardboard has flipped about 75%. And then mixed paper, mixed paper is all your other sort of, your magazines, your envelopes, that had about 105% dramatic shift in the markets over the last 24 months.
I need some clarification. OCC is?
Old corrugated containers.
Yeah, cardboard.
Okay. Thank you. That's kind of what I thought, but I just.
Cardboard, yeah, yeah. There's all these vernaculars.
Like I said, it's not really that sexy, but.
Yeah. Anybody else? More questions, comments?
Learned a lot about trash.
I have too.
Craig, have you had to add any transfer stations as a result of the new volume, or you just?
Great question that you asked. It's constantly being looked at. It's constantly being supplied, transportation's as the premium. When diesel jumped up to about $4.50 to $5, that was a big look, but there's always kind of looks of transfer stations and volumes, landfill space and trying to get your good, so to speak, from one place to the other, but they're constantly being looked at.
You mentioned what the 35% contamination, what's a reasonable goal for a community?
Goal, 15 or less. I think we can get there.
Okay.
Great event that we had at your home right before. Encourage any things to, you know, to get out, you know, town hall meetings or different conversations. We're putting on a simple website for educational website. When kids get back in school, it's awesome for schools, it's called recycling simplified.com. We're going to shoot it on the website as well, to kind of use it as links, but, you know, getting back to the basics and things like that.
I was fascinated, because of the commodities market, the comment, if, well, not forgotten, it's, when in doubt, throw it out. Don't try to recycle it. Wish recycling is a huge problem.
Yeah.
And we brought to this event trash bags, all my neighbors bought their trash over, and I was fascinated that what we thought was in there, we were probably 60% wrong or more in what we could put in our trash, or in the recycling. So it's fascinating, so.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
It has been introduced. Moving to number 190720, the council to consider ordinance 190720, text amendments for the Marion Plan Development Ordinance 190315 regarding the construction of basements in Sections Three and Four south of 166th Street and on the west side of the Summer Road.
Motion to introduce.
Second. Has been introduced. Ms. Ashelman.
Good evening. It's been a long night, so I'll try to keep my comments as short as possible, but there is a lot of history on this particular item. So the Marion subdivision was approved in 2015. At that time, the architectural requirements required basements be constructed with the homes of at least 1,275 square feet. In 2018, the builder came back and asked if they could do up to 21 slab homes within section, within the remaining sections. To date, they have constructed or are in the process of constructing 18 of those 21 homes, and you can see on this exhibit, the X's are basements, and then the P H's are patio homes, and I believe that means the O's are slab homes, too. They've evaluated all their lots, and they've found that there are only 18 lots within, that are remaining within Sections One and Two that can support a slab home. The other lots would need basements on them. At that time, they committed to an additional 200. At that time, they committed to an additional 200 square feet of square footage for any homes that were slab homes. And they are back before you today with, it's sent to you with a no recommendation from plan commission. We had 3, 5, 4 votes, which is not a majority of the group. And they eventually ended it in 8, 1, 1, no recommendation. We do have a new member that was the one abstention. The petitioner has added to their particular ordinance since the plan commission, and it has added two additional commitments for slab homes. In addition to the 200 square feet of additional space, they have also committed to at least a 64-foot additional garage square footage, added either as a bump out on the side or as an addition to the front of the garage that would increase the general square footage of that garage by 64 square feet, as well as at least a 60-square-foot covered patio, screened porch, sunroom, or breakfast nook at the rear of the home. I will answer any questions that you may have, and I'm sure the petitioner has some comments. I, I do want to address one quick thing. The homeowners of Marion itself had some concerns in particular about the prairie, which is this area. In between the two plan commission meetings, we actually got documentation from, now I can't remember the, huh?
Williams Creek?
Yeah, Williams Creek. I'm like, I just completely blanked. Which is a company that specializes in low-impact development and green infrastructure. And this particular prairie is in year 3 to 4, and they are right, they have told us that they're right on schedule for the establishment of that prairie. And they have also installed some additional trees in that prairie area as well.
How big is that prairie area? What's, is there an acreage to it? Is it half an acre, an acreage?
It feels like five acres, but I can't.
Four, okay.
The, the developer should certainly know.
Yeah, he did, he just answered.
Okay.
Any questions for Ms. Astrillman?
Got a question.
Yes.
Mr. Air.
Going through the packet, what is this ordinance, XXXXX20?
So that is from their plan commission packet. That was before their.
We can throw it away.
It, it's included, it's, but yes, you can throw it out.
It won't be signed, no.
No, they will not be signing that one. We, we also had to make some adjustments after your packets went out.
Yeah, I guess my other comment would be towards the, the builder.
Okay.
And he and I talked earlier today, I, I just don't know that, that a 64-square-foot, eight by eight, or whatever it might be, addition to the garage, or, and/or, I guess, because it's one, not both. So either that, or the six by 10 or 60-square-foot patio, screened porch, sunroom, breakfast nook.
I don't know that it's exactly worded either or. It, to me, it's worded that they're both there.
They would both be added?
Yeah. It's both.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they, in order to, no basement, they would add both things?
Correct. Plus the 200 square feet from previously.
It was 300, I thought it was 300, I'm sorry. I, I thought it was 300, I'm sorry.
Oh.
But their minimum size, almost 1,700 square foot, I think.
Uh, they increased it if it does not, I, correct me if I'm wrong, if it doesn't have a basement, it has to be 2,000.
2,000 square feet.
2,000, okay. I just don't know that the, that the 60-square-foot or 64-square-foot are substantial enough in my mind, especially on the packed back patio, it just doesn't.
Fisher? Do you want to please state your name?
Good evening, members of the council. Matt Skelton, partner with Church, Church, Siddle and Antrim, with offices at 2 North 9th Street here in Noblesville. With me is the builder with MI Homes of Indiana, John Isaacs, Mark Gradison with Gradison Development, the developers in the room as well, along with Andy Word with my office. The, I'll try not to duplicate anything Denise has said, but this is a, a request to remove the basement requirement and for applicable to Sections 3 and 4 of the Marion PD. That includes 48 of the 115 lots that were approved in, in Marion. The, uh, this does not require, uh, uh, that, that these lots have no basement. The basements are certainly allowed, it just eliminates the requirement that they have basements. The approved Marion, uh, if approved, the Marion P, the Marion development would still be developed at, at the same high-quality manner. The homes with and without basements are indistinguishable, except for to the trained eye. If you knew what you were looking for, you could tell them apart. But the, removing the basement requirement just broadens Marion's flexibility to respond to the buyer preferences that they've observed. They've been involved, uh, MI has been involved since 2016. They returned to the council in 2018, as, as Ms. Astrillman mentioned, to reduce the requirement for basements. It was granted. Originally, there were, 100% of the lots were required to have basements. The, the amendment that took place in 2018 reduced that down to 82% approximately. The, that amendment did include certain architectural standards. One of the items was mentioned, the square footage. Also, it included a requirement for dimensional shingles on the homes, decorative garage doors, and nine-foot ceilings on the main floor. Those would remain intact. Nothing would change, nothing is proposed to change about that. And as was noted, we did receive a no action vote from the plan commission, so MI has reflected on that a bit and has proposed these additional items for your consideration in, in hopes of garnering your support for the proposal. Uh, I would point out, just for clarification from us, that both of those things would be required for each house. Each, each home without a basement would be, be required to meet both of those requirements. And one of the items that was not mentioned, the, the garage extension or expansion, it, it could be a side bump out or, or a, a depth bump out. It, it could also take the form of a, a three-car garage, which is an option as well. I believe in your, you probably observed in the staff report to the plan commission, the staff did recommend that the plan commission forward the proposal to you with a positive recommendation. And we've reviewed the staff report, we, we agree with its findings. And I think that recommendation was based on our proposal without the two extra conditions that we're proposing to you this evening. But in light of, of the no recommendation, we would very much welcome your input, your guidance, your feedback. Uh, and to the extent that we can, we'd like to try to address your issues so we can have an approvable project.
Happy to respond, any questions? Any questions? Mr. Howard?
I, I might point out, and Mr. Peterson's well aware, there was remonstrance for two solid hours at the plan commission level. And the, it's primarily from the Sagamore people, but they, they're a close-knit group. And I don't like reading anything into silence, but the fact that they are not here this evening after the addition of these provisions, I think speaks, speaks positively as to their, I don't know that they acquiesce, but they're not here for two hours tonight, are they, Darren?
Forty-eight of them spoke.
Forty-eight spoke?
They all had three minutes.
And it was, and it was on a team meeting, too. It wasn't even a live meeting.
Well, that might have been a factor, the fact that they're not actually present, so. I mean, I think it's hard to read into that, but thank you. Mr. Boys?
Is the 64-foot porch covered?
Yes, it's either a covered porch or an enclosed room, like a sunroom, breakfast nook, or, what was it? Screened in porch, yeah. Yes, covered.
Well, first of all, I attended one of the meetings, the public meetings. We had Al onsite, we stood outside, and it's really a beautiful neighborhood. It really has a strong sense of community, and I, I think the best thing that we can do for a community like this is to let it finish. And I think sta, it's been very stagnant. And I feel like, I don't, I don't want to sit here when a builder or developer comes in and wants to cheapen the product. I feel like in this case, by the time we, I don't know what the average cost of a basement is, but I do know 300 square feet plus the two additions feels like an equal cost, but a greater value. I feel like we are getting something in exchange for the basements and not just a lessening of the neighborhood. I can't drive through that neighborhood and find the least expensive and the most expensive house. I can't even quite frank, I mean, I know what I'm looking for, so I can find the basements, but I went through them with my daughter, and she couldn't pick them out. And I, I just think the best thing we can do for the neighbors and for this community, people who have already invested, is to hold that value by closing up the neighborhood. That's, that's how I feel about this.
President?
What else?
I have a question in the ordinance that we've talked about increasing the minimum square footage up to 2,000 square feet, but I don't see that written down anywhere in this ordinance. I see the addition of the 64 square feet and the 60 square feet of covered patio. Am I missing it somewhere?
It's in the existing ordinance. It, it was part of the negotiation in 2018.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
If you eliminated the basement, you had to add 300 feet, and that was the last addition.
So there's no additional square footage to the main structure in this provision, in this goal?
Nothing in addition.
Other than the 64 and the 60?
Yeah, it was, it's the same request that was made before. I think the, originally in 2018, the request was made to remove the, the requirement. And I think that most of the city had tolerance for it at the, at the time was, was 82%. Down to 82%. And so with the, you know, some years under the belt of the developer, they've learned what the market preferences and, and consumer preferences actually are, not, not speculating. And so that's, that's why, really, we're back with the same request.
Then I'd just follow up, that there are supplemental documents that include objections to these changes. So while they're not showing, we don't have residents here tonight, they have submitted their opposition to these changes.
File.
It's in the files, so. And as I've shared with, with Mr. Isaacs before about, I, I have a concern about us coming back and making another change to an ordinance. This process went through some significant negotiations when it was first approved, and I wasn't even on council at that time, but I know that it went through lengthy discussions. And then to come back and make a change, and to now come back and make another change, I think it just sets a, a difficult precedent for us to say no to another developer who wants to come back in and make changes later on. So, and again, that's not new information to Mr. Isaacs.
I have a quick question. To Mrs. Wells' point, are you, are you guys confident that this is, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but that this will get you over the edge for the next sections, or?
Yeah, so we. Jonathan Isaacs, MI Homes. As, as far as learning the market and identifying where we are, you know, things have changed along Summer Road since we started. Marion was the first project approved on Summer Road, and we're gonna be the last to finish. Arbor, Beazer, and Lennar all came in after us, and, and all have built far faster than, than what we have done. They did not have the same limitations as us. We're a, an all-ranch community. We felt in an all-ranch community, at the price point that we were talking about at the time, basements were going to be acceptable. The market reacted very quickly. We were eight specs in and a, and a, and a model home all done before our first sale. So we came in very early in the project and asked for the, the change. The majority of the homes that are occupied today were done after the requested change in, in 2018. So just put kind of a timeframe to that. What we have learned over the years, not just in Marion, but all of our Empty Nester product, is that the Empty Nester does not want a basement. They're moving down from their, you know, much larger home that they grew up in, had their kids grow up in. They're more of a lock-and-go society. They're thinking that they're gonna travel more, they wanna go away for the winter time, whatever. They don't want to worry about water in basements and things like that. So that's what they're telling us. So, so we believe the resolution to the basement situation solves our issue. We can live with all the other standards that are in the ordinance. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
President, just one. Mr. Skelton, for my edification, I just want to make sure. Sections 1 and 2 will be built as shown on the current built lots slash future. In other words, you've got basements, patio homes. Those are the, those homes will be built as shown? And then the, if you, no basements in 3 and 4, is, am I following right?
Well, they could have basement, right?
But basements will not be required.
Yeah, okay. Required.
Yes, correct, I think the answer is yes. I think the short answer is yes.
How, how many homes in Section 3 and 4 are adjacent to Sagamore? I saw that in here, but I can't remember the number. Is it like eight?
Depends.
Yeah, I guess, it, it's, it's to the, it, it's basically.
Okay, I see it.
That, that lot and that lot.
Okay. And are there special treatments being planned for those?
John, John will address.
There's tree lines, there's four tree lines.
Just the trees.
So there, uh, there are, there are two rows of pine trees that are expected to be there in that common area. That common area is anywhere between 50 to 125 feet in depth. There is also an existing tree row closer, probably closer to the pond that has significant trees. Mark's here, he can probably respond to how, how he wants to, you know, handle that treatment. But I think the, the idea is, is that the bulk of the homes are facing towards Sagamore and that area, not, not to the rears. And then in addition to the pine trees or whatever on Marion's side, Sagamore's side also has a row of pine trees that have been planted and have been there for quite some time. So there will be three rows of pine trees essentially adjacent between the two neighborhoods.
Any other questions, comments, or we just, we have been introduced? Talk about here in a couple of weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Final item is the council comments. Are there any council comments at this point? Mr. Air?
Go ahead.
Mr. O'Connor, I'm sorry.
Patty's still here, and I just wanted to compliment you and the street department staff on doing a yeoman's job cleaning up after Saturday's quick storm that blew through. I know in my neighborhood, there were several pear trees that are fairly brittle that got blown over, and came home this afternoon, and most, all of it was gone. So you guys. The city after a quick storm, so thanks to you and the staff for being out, Johnny on the spot.
Also like to compliment the street department, police department, fire department over the 4th of July activities. Concerts at Federal Hill Park are ongoing, but there's a lot of stuff still going on in downtown Noblesville. So Friday and Saturday were, last Friday and Saturday were very busy, and we're seeing a lot of activity on Sundays, so.
Anyone else?
I just want to say thank you again for the sewer, the new webpage, explaining the sewer and the trash a little more details, anybody has any chance to visit it, it, it just came up in the last week, and it was really well done, so thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
So move.
We are adjourned. We are adjourned.